Call.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
Present.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. George, can we get you to pray for us?
All your heads, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the blessings of the day. We ask that you for continued prayers for our servicemen and women overseas and at home. Also, Father, for our first responders. Um, the hurricane, Father, has really reaped a lot of damage and and loss of life. And we just pray that you be with those folks and and that you would guide and protect them. Yes, Father, now that you be with us as we deliberate and do the best things we can for the folks of Gresham County. For it's in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Join us for the pledge.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to their republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of additions. Uh, an employment contract for Bill Leonard and we have to go into closed session for union negotiations. There any other additions or deletions?
What was the agenda? Mispresented. Sport.
George, supported by Steve to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, public comment.
Good evening. I just wanted to introduce you all to Wes Conde. He is our new IT support specialist here at Gresham County. Today was his first day and he's learned a lot and he's probably feeling pretty overwhelmed right now because I've dumped a lot of information on him. He's holding up pretty well so far.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team.
Just a bit.
Excited?
Glad you came. Glad to have you back, Bill. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Good to be back.
Oh, good.
Thanks.
Hello, Laura Beaver, prosecuting attorney, as you all know, and I am pleased to have Ryan Vallay here with me. He is uh, our new chief assistant prosecutor. He's starting, uh, left his employment yesterday as chief assistant prosecutor in Montgomery County and started here this morning. So, uh, I think he has twenty-eight years.
Eight years.
Uh, twenty-eight years of uh, experience as an attorney, a very experienced felony trial attorney. Um, thrilled that it was able to work out and that we could get him here. Um, so he's a former vet. He's known him for a while.
Oh, fantastic.
You and I are gonna get along alright.
Alright, I'm very happy to be here. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for joining us and uh.
I'll never get everybody's name right, but I'll.
You'll get it after a while.
Good to meet you all.
Good move getting you out of Montgomery County.
Good move getting heck out of Montgomery.
Still live there, so I can't.
Oh, wow. Not gonna see any bad, especially we're on TV.
Yeah, exactly. Very nice to meet you.
Very nice meeting you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would you students want to introduce yourselves?
And I am also here for the same thing. Yeah.
Wow.
Really glad that you guys decided to come to these because I think it is wonderful for our youth to learn about this because someday all of us up here with gray hair are gonna need you guys to be sitting in these positions. So, thank you.
Okay, consideration of the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar. Word.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
motion nay. Motion carried. Looks like. Oh, I was about to jump. Administrator's report.
I got a quick report today uh, for you. It is the first day of our new fiscal year today, October first runs through September thirtieth. Uh, we've been very busy just transitioning. Be surprised at how much work there is going from one fiscal year to another. With the financial systems, we have the budget entered, so that business as usual for the employees. Uh, Sheila has been and Stephanie have been working uh, to get the new uh, benefit packets uh, out there for the people. So, all that transition is going on. You have people, you have employees that split their payroll between different funds and different line items, make sure they're all that's correct. You got uh, the raises for the new contracts. Oh, I have to be instituted today, so that's been keeping us busy. Uh, BSNA, we are finally at the top of the queue for uh, converting our general ledger chart of accounts, which is the uh, the big project that we contracted with um.
Um.
Woodhill Group.
Woodhill Group. So, we do expect uh, to run a whole bunch of tests on it to make sure that it's gonna work right now. Um, so we're waiting for feedback for that. It will be completed for the audit. Everything will be converted over, so there will not be any issue once it comes to audit. My to-do list that I have, uh, number one on it is uh, this week to be working with our township, cities and Spicer Group to update our solar and battery ordinance. Uh, last week, we had a township meeting at Iron River. Uh, some of us were there. And a lot of the townships have been approached by companies that'd like to come in and put battery storage and and solar in their areas. And they weren't comfortable with their ordinance either. Uh, so we're all gonna work together, uh, similar to how the, we approached this with the wind parks when turbines came into town. Uh, next I'll be getting our audit RFP out for um, out to bid for audits. Uh, opioid task force meeting. It's time to get that meeting back together. Um, we still want to have uh, a plan in place to be executed uh, the first of January. Um, the RFP for the body and dash cameras that was presented to you, that needs to be put out. Uh, and at the beginning of the fiscal year, we're going to be shopping, looking for uh, training programs for our employees. What we have in progress right now, uh, you've probably seen that they are still working on converting the LED lights uh, in this portion of the courthouse. Um, and Matt is going to be working diligently here on our phone system upgrade. And that's what I have for you today.
Question, you're talking about LED lights. Are they gonna do anything in here at all or?
I guess every light fixture was bid out, so they will come in here.
Right.
They are probably waiting for the, do all the scaffolding work at once.
I was just wondering because you know, we always have problems. Sometimes we have problems with the big lights, but more often than not, these can lights have a problem.
Yep, and uh, they just started doing can lights yesterday, I believe. That's the first time I saw them starting to swap off things, so.
Here. George, do you want to start with your?
I sure. Um, on uh, Monday, the twenty-third, I attended the Breckenridge Village Meeting. Uh, they have finished now the D cell lane that goes into their new industrial park in preparation for building their fire hall. So, that's all been completed. Uh, they'll be shutting down their uh, water park, their spray park or whatever you want to call it. And then they'll be doing a retrofit on that of which the park system gave seventy thousand dollars to. And there'll be a total of close to a hundred fifty thousand dollar renovation. So, that's gonna be really good. Um, at the end of the month, I remember the date, I should, twenty, I'm gonna say the twenty-eighth, but I'll get back with you on that. Um, they're having a uh, harvest festival type uh, get together in their new park uh, for all the residents. So, that's gonna happen then. So, they're doing really well. It's a very nicely run village. They, they know what they're doing there, so I know. They appreciate that. And then uh, uh, on the Wednesday, uh, we, Steve and I went to the board of health meeting and uh, what, what I talked about or what I talked about, what uh, medical director talked about was tuberculosis. Uh, we're seeing an uptick in tuberculosis. Uh, what happens is a lot of different things contribute to it, but we have so many cows in this county and people that work with cows. For some reason, they have problems with tuberculosis. And so, they always have to stay up under, under testing and all that, so. And there's quite a few counties within the state of Michigan that have outbreaks. Uh, so.
George, I have a question for you. Is that the cows that get it or the people that get it?
No, the people get it. The cows aren't getting it, the people are.
Yeah.
Uh, and they have to be tested all the time, so and and they think maybe there's probably more tuberculosis in the population than we really know that people get tested, but they're tested all the time.
So, what is that? I can't remember what is.
TB? Your lungs. That's it.
Respiratory issues. Cold consumption. It used to be a major killer.
Well, back in the days, yes. It was, yeah, it was one of the things that advanced. So, that's all I got.
Tim?
Well, I uh, the only thing, I went to uh, the Gresham County Association Meeting in Pine River uh, County Hall on September twenty-fifth. When Doug Merchant embezzled uh, uh, Belcher from consumers uh, energy talk along with a woman, the woman talked more. Um, I asked her about wind and solar power and how economical it is. And she said it's economical because of, of tax breaks. Maybe I should ask her, well, without those tax breaks, how would it be? I did. Um, so, um, well, they talked about battery storage issues, uh, uh, well, you talked about uh, the recycling plant, Greater Gresham Development Recycling Plan. Uh, where we would recycle more things, but it's, it's voluntary.
Mm-hmm.
So, and they talked about new construction of some of the township halls. The next meeting, the, we don't meet that often, is uh, February fifth.
It's quarterly.
February what?
Yeah, February. Look it up.
February fifth is the next one.
Yeah, Kevin was sick, so he wasn't running.
Kevin was decent.
Decent. Yeah.
February fifth, yeah.
But he had recovered in time to go to the Lions game last night.
Well, no, that's nice to hear. He's got his priorities straight.
Right. Jan?
Um, I went to Traverse City. I went a day early. I went on a Monday after, actually it was late Monday afternoon when I left. And um, it was a very, one of the best conferences that I've gone to in a long time. Uh, very knowledgeable, um, people there that have a lot to talk about, especially with the election coming up and um, some of the things that they foresee. And um, it didn't start until Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon. So, they gave me a chance to get up there and get settled on and, and it just so happened, I should have said something. They put me in the furthest room away from that, so I had a lot of good walking and that was good for me. But anyway, um, and a lot of speakers, I brought back a lot of literature, which I've passed out to different people uh, here on the board and um, uh, in the courthouse. Uh, things, you know, just information and um, maybe something they, that they might want to look into. And I was there till Thursday and then I came back and getting ready to um, um, for a new year. So, I would imagine it's been pretty tough.
You.
Uh, on the eighteenth, I went to the Park and Recreation Meeting. John Tiers is gonna do a presentation tonight on um, they're in need of um, some new golf carts. I was kind of shocked to hear how old the golf two thousand and two thousand and ones. Um, so you think about how often those get, if you've ever been to the parks and see how often those get used. I was shocked that they were that old. Um, so he's got a good proposal there and the ones they want to go with are, did a little research on them, they're fantastic carts. I think they'll be great for what they're doing with them. Um, on the twenty-third, I went Fulton. Uh, Fulton is a busy township. They have a lot of things going on. They are faced with some big uh, sewer project stuff that they're dealing with right now. Uh, spending up the rest of their ARPA money. They've done a lot of things in their cemeteries. They have five cemeteries in their township, which is a lot for a township. Um, and they've done a lot of work in them and and they're really done some improvements on things and the quotes they've gotten to do some work on their mausoleums is, the mausoleum was unreal. And they've been doing a lot of that work themselves and cleaning it up and it, it really, they're doing a nice job in what they're doing there. Um, they had some information they had me take to the health department meeting, which was two days later. I was at the same health department meeting as, as George. I took that information there for him. Referenced some blight and health issues with a few residences in Pompeii. And I think they're gonna maybe move forward with using the county's in conjunction because the, they're really going after two totally separate things between the blight and the, the health stuff. So, they're gonna, I think, work on those properties on both ends to see if they can make a difference. Because if you've ever, um, well, one is right on State Road, you can't miss it. If you go through town, but if you go to the west, e- either way, but if you go to the west, there's a couple that, and make the loop through there, just drive through there. There's um, there's obviously some places that need some attention, so. Um, let's see, health department, they talked about the TB thing, which was good. Um, we didn't. Everything else seems to be really, we're kind of rolling along with this whole septic code thing. We talk about it at every meeting. Um, they're on like the eighth addition and brought some stuff back. It kind of sounds like we're leading towards um, maybe making some headway on something. Some of their original proposals were, quite frankly, ridiculous and there was no way that, I mean, it was gonna bankrupt the health department if they tried to do it. Um, there was no way really to enforce them. And I think we're kind of, like a lot of these bills when they get started, common sense finally comes into play and I think we'll end up with something that's workable that everybody can, everybody can.
Every four or five years, this rears its ugly head. I think they're closer now than they've ever been.
Ever been, yeah.
Or to a true Michigan septic.
They need, so.
Which, which we need.
Yep.
We just have to be fair to all concerned and that's the problem.
Yep. Uh, Township Association Meeting also that day, the twenty-fifth. Many of you were there. Tim, you hit most of the highlights that were there, but uh, we had the best discussion I think there was, was the one about power and what is happening because in November, the twenty-first of November, when the state then takes over the um, ordinances. Ordinances where um, basically our townships and county have had a lot of control over what happens with our, with our land as far as land or solar and wind. And, and now we're talking about these battery things. Um, come November, we all know, uh, it didn't make it on the ballot and, you know what I mean? So, there's uh, the state of Michigan will have oversight over that and that is a real concern for a lot of people. And um, it's interesting to hear what consumers talk about how they kind of want to work. Consumers is, is one of the two big players in, in power in the state. Um, along with several smaller ones, but they, they kind of want to make sure they work with the counties and the townships because they gotta be here. A lot of these companies that come in and build these projects are here just to do that and then they're gone. They're through regulation, they're gonna be taken over by consumers, VTE, um, Wolverine Power, somebody's gonna take them over that's bigger. So, they're, they're not as concerned about working with the public because they're gonna be in and out. They're gonna make their money and be gone where consumers and these others have to stay here and work with us. So, it's gonna be interesting.
Well, that's why Chris is working on those ordinance.
Absolutely.
Picking them up.
Absolutely.
Because if they're loosey goosey, then the state comes in and they're gonna tell you what to do.
Tim?
You don't want that.
One of the things I think that was alarming to me was how we now have all these solar farms in the county and the people who own the land didn't realize that they were gonna be switched from, you know, you, you had to put eighty acres of farmland in there. Well, once that's completed and it's in process, that now will take, is removed from ag exemption and it's called industrial and it's gonna majorly change their tax brackets and things. So, I think that's gonna be interesting and see how that plays out. Um, whether these companies truly pay that difference for them or, or what's gonna happen. It's gonna be really interesting to see how that works out for them. So, um, and then on the twenty-seventh, um, I was back at Washington Township again. Or they had a groundbreaking ceremony, even though um, ground had already been broken and the footings and the walls and things have been poured for their new addition. Um, the reason was uh, people were sick with COVID, so they couldn't be there. So, everybody was healthy and we were there and um, I scrounged around to make sure I had a good, clean uh, hard hat because the memo went out to everybody that was supposed to be there to wear a hard hat and bring a shovel. And I was the only one in the picture with a hard hat on. One other um, lady whose husband owns a construction company did bring two hard hats and there was a couple of women that put them under their arm. So, anyhow, um, that was a neat, it's gonna be a nice addition. It's gonna be really nice to see Washington Township have true office space to work out of instead of, if you've ever been there, like the treasurer out of the kitchen, the clerk's working out of a coat closet. Um, it's.
Oh, they did the best they could for how many years?
Absolutely. I mean, they've made, they've made it work, but it's really, they're gonna be using these ARPAs and they got a, a nice um, from the Gresham County Community Foundation. Um, so it's, it's gonna be really nice to see um, that township hall have true office space and, and, and be a more modern facility for them. And that concludes mine.
I do have a question that maybe you can answer, Steve or someone. Um, it was in the paper about all the citizens being concerned about the wires going through.
Oh, in North Shade Township, yeah. Um, I talked a little bit about that at the last meeting. Um, there's the, we're all familiar with the main power lines that run through. I mean, we've had a, I think the sixties or seventies when they came through, the one that runs just north of fifty-seven. Um, the country is trying to complete their loops of main transmission lines so that we have less brownouts and, and blackouts. And if there's an emergency with a line such as the mess from the hurricanes, you can still backfeed power different directions. Um, so this is part of that plan, nationwide plan is to put this transmission line that leaves our county Nelson Road uh, substation and goes south, it touches one piece of property in New Haven. And then it goes all the way across uh, North Shade and it affects many landowners there and there, there are a lot of concerns. Um, uh, simply because of where it's going. I mean, there's property that they're going at angles across it, which totally causes even more issues with the usefulness of that land. Even in agriculture, it takes, you know, things out of the play for them. They can't run center of the irrigations, they can't crop dust. I mean, it is a major concern for a lot of them. Plus, they're losing uh, this valuable farmland. Um, so they've had an attorney that's came up and spoke at their township in a meeting and so they're, they're working through that. But it's, it's a main line that's supposed to go from Gresham County all the way down to near Shipshewan, Indiana. So, that's the, that's the route that it will take. This first segment is from Gresham County, New Haven Township down to One Night Township and, which is near uh, Grant Lodge in Eaton County.
So, haven't started the work yet.
No, it's, this is something that will be happening in the future, but um, nobody even knew for sure how big like the bases are gonna be, but if you've been over just recently into, like if you've taken Merrill Road north into Saginaw County, there's some fairly new ones that are connect to get all the wind power back into the main transmission lines. But I think these are gonna be bigger. They're gonna be more like the ones that are north of fifty-seven, north of Grant Road. Main big, big, big bell line.
But these are gonna be different, they're gonna be bigger.
Well, with, nobody seems to know, are they gonna be the big, you know, four-leg base like? That's kind of old school. Really don't see a ton of that anymore. More of them are these very large uh, round bases that are kind of similar to what they use for the windmills that they, they put in these huge bases and then that's what they want. We'll see. I guess we'll see what it ends up looking.
Okay. Thanks.
I went to uh, Greater Gresham. I like that uh, as it's, they have so many different people there and you, you hear what's going on and they're all individual uh, organizations. And I went to the Riverdale Car Show and they have doubled the number of cars from last year. And if they keep doing that, they're gonna run out of streets in Riverdale, but all good. And I went to, went to the MAC Conference in Traverse City and they had a lot of um, good seminars, but they had a band playing Motown after the president's uh, uh, meeting. And I had to leave. It was louder than my chainsaw. And when I run my chainsaw, I have earplugs on, so.
He's getting old.
Well, I, I think they, they might have misread the crowd because uh, I was only in the middle of the pack, so. Hokey doke. Now, he can.
Okay, so what I've got today is the two thousand twenty-four apportionment report. So, what I did, instead of going through the report and reading each uh, page and the millage rates, uh, everything like that, I decided I'd create more of a presentation to go along with the report, to kind of show you what goes into the report and how we uh, basically create um, the apportionment report. So, first, what is the apportionment report? The apportionment report is a summary of all of the millages and special assessments that are to be levied within the county. So, this report shows the millages, uh, shows the special assessments, this shows the taxable value and then it shows the estimated uh, tax dollars that will be levied from these millages. Um, typically, the estimated tax dollars are higher than what's actually collected though because it does not take into account all of the uh, exemptions and abatements and things like that going on in county. Uh, so when we create the apportionment report, it's done throughout the course of the year, using several reports. Uh, the first one is the Millage Reduction Fraction Computation Form, the L forty twenty-eight. Uh, and I'll go through these, uh, each of these reports in a second here. Uh, that's done in May. Um, the Millage Reduction Fraction Certification Worksheet is done in May as well. And then the Tax Rate Request is done in September. So, uh, before I can go into these forms, I need to touch on a little bit about what a millage reduction fraction is. Uh, a millage reduction fraction is a um, basically a fraction that reduces the millages of a taxing authority when their taxable value uh, grows more than the current rate of inflation. So, if your taxable value goes up than more than what the rate of inflation was, your millages are gonna be reduced, uh, reduce the burden on the taxpayers. So, that's calculated by using the prior year taxable value minus the losses divided by the current year's taxable value minus the additions and then times the uh, rate of inflation. And basically, that makes it so um, the millage reduction fraction is ignoring uh, the new and losses in each uh, taxing authority and just looking at the taxable value and how much it's basically increasing. Uh, and a millage reduction fraction cannot exceed one, so. Uh, and a millage reduction fraction cannot exceed one, so. That's what you'll see on this next form here. Uh, any questions or anything like that? So this form is called the L forty twenty-eight, the Millage Reduction Computation Form. Um, basically, this has all of the information that's needed for the reduction fraction. So you can see that the prior year taxable values listed, the current year taxable value, the losses for each uh unit, the additions for each unit. And then the millage reduction fraction, um the base uh tax rate fraction and the truth in assessing. Uh, fraction, which of those last two columns are very rare. Um, but so we create this form uh. Has uh, this is just the first page of the form. It goes on to list every taxing authority within the county, the school districts, the DDAs, the. Um, uh, any other um taxing authorities, basically the transit authority, the fire uh EMS authorities. Um, and then the one tricky thing about this report is the school districts don't really follow county lines. So we create this report. The and then I sent to uh each of the directors in any surrounding counties that have school districts. And then they in return send me their forty twenty-eights, we uh. Compile them into one form called the L forty twenty-eight intercounty report. So that's how we get the school district uh totals. Moving on from there is the L forty thirty-four, the calculation worksheet. So this is sent to every uh township and taxing authority. Basically, it has the same information that is on the forty twenty-eight, but it's just broken down for each township. Uh, it gives them all the taxable value information and then the fraction is laid out to show them what fraction to put on their uh tax rate request form. And that brings me to the tax rate request form, which I believe you're all fairly familiar with. Um, this just lists the millages that a taxing authority wants to collect and it uh is basically to show. That if they have a reduction fraction that it's been applied uh correctly. So we take all of these uh forty twenty-nines from every uh taxing authority, we compile them. And then uh that is what we use to create the apportionment report. So all those um. Millage rates get compiled into one report and um. I don't know uh if you want me to go through any of the specific millages that are listed on those reports or if you're. Comfortable just looking at those yourselves or if there's any questions or anything like that. There's quite a bit of millages listed on there is the only reason I. Say that, but.
I'm good.
I must say, why you, the, how how long have you worked for us now?
Uh, I believe five years.
Yeah, five years. I've read more about equalization in five years than I ever known in my whole life.
Glad to hear it.
That's that's a fact. When before I had, I'm suddenly in this position and I did not know how all that worked.
Yes, I don't know if anybody does. I like to put, I know it's kind of, but uh.
Makes a lot more sense today than it did five years ago.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Uh, I like to put in just a little bit about how we create each of these reports and why we created these reports, kind of give a little bit of context to. What we do. Um, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
I like to say the bottom line to every taxpayer in the county is you need to know how much you're having to pay. Because a county operates on tax dollars. That's how we do that. And through equalization is how that money is set. That that revenue for the county is set through equalization. And it's it's really important and people need to be. A little more aware of what goes on. It's complicated and I understand that and I sure don't understand it all, but I understand a lot more than I did five years ago.
Glad to hear that.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and I think the really the biggest burden is on the individual assessors for each of the townships who are collecting the uh. Each property data from each individual parcel that uh, because we kind of just oversee it, but they're the ones that are collecting all the numbers basically for us.
And and if they get a little a little bit wonky in their township or whoever they're. They're gonna have a board of review and people are gonna, either they're gonna line up or they're not. If they're lining up, maybe the assessor's got a problem. But no, I I it's good.
Okay, we need a motion to uh certify the certification report.
I saw move that we certify the appropriations report that's been presented by Keegan Bengal.
I'll second it.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to certify their. Certification. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Renewal of the JAVS Maintenance and Support Agreement.
Hello, good evening. I am here um asking for approval of the extended warranty and uh maintenance and support agreement for JAVS. JAVS is the court, if you recall, a year ago, a little over a year ago. Um, with the ARPA dollars, we were able to upgrade the recording system in all of the courts. And um this is our new video recording equipment that we purchased. And um the original warranty is now ran out, which we anticipated, we knew this would be coming. Um, and that this will be the ongoing agreement for them to provide us with support and maintenance in warranty over. The equipment that we purchased. Uh, the amount that I'm asking for approval for an annual contract is twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
This will end up being a yearly thing that will be. Every year for a renewal.
Right. And this isn't really new. Uh, we already have the money in our budget and. We were paying before for our audio equipment. We had to have a similar contract for support for that. So this is just the video portion of that.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve this for um twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Uh, and we'll prove it for every year or?
You have to come back every year or the talent changes.
I I mean, I think I think Chris would probably say that if we are comfortable with it staying the same, if there aren't any changes, it can. Be approved ahead of time, but I'm I would defer to Chris.
But this is, but this is renewed every year, correct?
It is, yeah, it'll have.
It's not like a five-year contract or anything.
Right, no, it's just, it it actually runs from July to August.
And if you would like, we can just. It's built in the budget this year, but it's the first time that we've seen this. So going forward. We can have this approved when the budget is approved.
Did I have a second? Moved by Jan, supported by George to approve the. Renewal for the Maintenance and Support Agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Next up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Some darn guy wants golf carts.
So I'm John Director uh for Parks and Rec. Um, a quick review is we have four golf carts. Uh, two at Hubshire, two at Reed. Um, they're two thousand one and two thousand two club car golf carts. So twenty-two, twenty-three years old. Um, this year I've been told by Josh and Ron. That uh they have all been in the repair shop at least once this year and some have been in multiple times. Um, so I went out and got three bids, US Golf Carts, JBC Golf Carts and Pfeiffer. Um. I would recommend going with the Pfeiffer quote, not only just because it's the cheapest, but. They brought a golf cart out to me and it physically walked through it, so I kind of understood what it was like. Um. And there's no extra cost far as delivery, vehicle freight, all that extra. Money like they throw behind the scenes. Um, so I am recommending to go with the Pfeiffer. Uh, quote for twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and it is budgeted for 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 this year.
And just to be clear, these are all set up the way you wanted them as well.
They all have a.
Cargo box, the cigarette lighter for your. Sprayer, everything, the way you wanted them. Th- this company um didn't throw a bunch of extra stuff on them. They they put them the way we need them at Gresham County Park.
He asked me what we needed for them and I'm saying basic, we just need the cargo box, you know, to put stuff, trash, truck and bag of stuff in the back. And then we have a little sprayer that they use to clean bathrooms and stuff out with, so we needed power for that. And he goes, yep, that'll be no extra charge. That would be, that's already included in the purchase of the cart itself, so.
Do you know, a ceiling or a roof over the top of it?
There's a roof with it, yep, um for protection from sun, rain.
Windshield too, right?
Nope.
Windshield too, yep.
Shield, windshield.
The windshield, so, yep. But they are, they're. No, these ones are gas and I'm not real familiar with engines, but it's like uh. Fuel injected, so they they do run better than the ones we have now. They.
The old ones run like.
No, the old ones are gas too.
How many miles to a gallon do they get, do you know?
I don't know, to be honest with you. Um.
Great. I've heard, I've heard that they get as much as fifty miles.
Twice around the golf course, there you go.
No, they uh, but as much as they get used, I think it's time to.
Yeah.
Upgrade them as much as they are.
You got, I think you did marvelous.
Two-year warranty.
Comes with them. Um, trying to think of what else.
I think we should all take a ride on it.
Welcome to.
I was gonna make a.
It'll take him maybe two weeks by the time I call him. Not that we need him right now because we're, you know, we're slowing down, but he goes, it's two weeks. And the guys, obviously Josh, Ron, and Pearson, the maintenance guys, even with these old ones, um at the end of each year, kind of in the winter time, they'll bring them up and kind of go through them themselves. If it's something they can't fix, they'll take it to their shop, but. They both seem to be very knowledgeable about these new ones, what they consist of, so hopefully that'll help us in the long run as well. Um, far as taking them and paying for the repair costs for whichever that might be.
I saw move that we approve the Parks and Recreation to go with the Pfeiffer Quote for four new. Easy Go Valor Golf Cart.
I'll second it.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim to go with the quote from Pfeiffer for four. Easy Go carts, total cost of eighty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Eight hundred and eighty.
Yeah. You have a whole.
Cross my lines.
We will be, uh, we will sell the other four old ones and that will go back into the park's uh general front as well, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
We didn't vote on that.
Well, you did vote, did you? Nope.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim to uh buy the golf carts from Pfeiffer. For a total of twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Got some new golf carts coming.
Like that day one of the new fiscal year, he's already knocking off stuff. Projects list.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, I am here today um kind of uh based on a formality. Um, in the budget, when Chris was meeting with Ryan Pilarito from Indigent Defense, he had built in. A full-time position due to the um extra amount of work that's been done. So what I am asking of you tonight is to move a part-time position administrative assistant into a full-time position. Um, based on the amount of work that is necessary in indigent defense at this point. And like I said, this was included in the budget. So this is not an adjustment that needs to be made. Chris already had it in there.
So how much difference was that, the amount? Going from um wherever she was to the, it was the sub-five?
I don't have that information. I can get that for you.
The name is Stephanie.
Yes, but this is about the position. It's not related to specifically.
She's going to go full-time and just.
Get a full-time position.
What is she at now with stuff?
I I don't have that information.
Works twenty-five hours a week.
She works twenty hours a week. Okay.
I heard she does a good job.
You heard what?
She does a good job.
Yeah, that's right.
This is not about her. This is about that position going from part-time to full-time.
This is one hundred percent grant funded.
Yep. I saw move that we agree to. Move the indigent defense position to a full-time position as presented.
Moved by Steve, supported by George to uh approve. Indigent Defense uh Administrative Assistant from part-time to full-time.
And Sheila, I would like to have information on that, so I'll call you.
All those in favor, say aye. O's nay.
Yeah, this was approved by the state of Michigan already. And I do have the the. Grant document I can forward to you that shows the breakdown.
No, we don't pay for that. The state of Michigan pays for it.
Yeah, I was just.
We just needed your permission to.
That's formality.
Change it in payroll.
I'm canceling this next thing, right?
Keegan's got his gun out. Equalization Director Contract, Chris.
Alright, so um. As we've been talking over the last year, Keegan has finally um. Made it to the point where he's ready to take his uh practice private. Not only other municipalities, but here at Gresham County. Um, he has done just an absolute tremendous job. In our equalization department, the people in the townships and the cities. They have so much respect for the work that he does, how he helps them. Um, the the people across the states know who Keegan is. He is a rock star in equalization, not just Gresham County. Were you telling me that you are now the president of the Michigan Equalization?
Uh, just on the board.
You're on the the president of the board or?
Uh, just on the board.
On the board, okay.
One of those ones that you moved through while the positions till you begin with.
Keegan, at the conference that I went to, somebody came up and told me that they knew you, that you were and all about it, so. They said that you're a wonderful person, so I said on to you. You're a good job.
You know, a a year ago, we sat down and we talked and we we saw that uh the landscape of equalization. Michigan is changing. Uh, there's just less and less people going into it, which typically means that it goes private. So we talked about how Gresham County could help Keegan. Take his uh his job private. Um, and for the last year, he has been working remote. Um, if you've come into admin, you see that there are workstations that uh he and other employees can utilize and he does utilize that. Um, we've been practicing this for a year. And I would say that people are happier, the customers are happier, the townships are happier. I know that I am happier. I think Keegan is happier with this model. And once we start, when uh other counties are gonna follow, it's it's gonna happen. Um. He put together a contract for us, which I have included. Uh, year one would cost the county eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, with a five percent escalator for five years. Now, either party can request that this contract be broken. Well, I believe it was a ninety-day uh.
Day notice. There's ninety days.
Um. I did not put this out for RFP because of two reasons. Number one. I think it's obvious that he's given us a hometown discount here uh for working with him and helping his business grow. Uh, and number two, um, I don't want people to submit proposals for this work. When we pretty much know that we're going to go with Keegan. But I do just want you to know that that I did not put this to RFP. But I am recommending that we sign this contract with Bengal Assessing. Um, and continue this relationship that we have with Keegan going forward. Uh, any questions, both of us are available to. Oh, it would be effective immediately.
I'd make a motion that we would enter into a contract with Keegan.
I'll say that.
You mean, the minutes reflect Bengal Assessing?
Yes, Bengal Assessing.
Moved by George and supported by Jan to enter into a contract with Bengal Assessing for. Total of eighty-five thousand the first year. Total of eighty-five thousand the first year. And a five percent raise for the next five years, each year for the next five years, uh. Probably should have a roll call on that.
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Hey, I'll see you on Friday morning still.
Hey, don't get away with that.
Anything else to come before the, oh, oh, that's right, pardon me, the Leonard, Bill Leonard contract.
So the, Bill Leonard works in, um. He's a permits officer, a bloat officer, and a soil erosion officer that we've contracted with for, uh, ever since I've been. Around and, um. The contract was something that expired yesterday, so we quickly worked through one today. The only things that changed in the contract. It's still for two years, there is still a, um. Thirty day notice if you want to break the contract. Uh, but the rate of pay went up to twenty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents, um, per hour. The reason we chose twenty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents, because that was the, the rate of pay for the other. Blight, soil erosion permit officer in that, and. It's the fair thing to do. I would. Everything else, um, well, it's also offered life insurance and long-term disability that was not offered to him for. Asking for your consideration to.
All other full-time employees are eligible for correct?
Yes.
So just give him the same thing that some of the other union contracts have.
He's not a full-time employee.
He is now.
He's not, okay.
I'll make a motion that we. Give Bill Leonard twenty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents an hour. And renew his after that for two years.
Support.
Moved by Jan, supported by Steve, to extend a contract to Bill Leonard for the next two years, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Okay. Airport meeting. I would make a, a motion that we suspend the regular meeting and go into the airport meeting.
Second.
By George, supported by Tim, to suspend the regular meeting and go into the airport meeting, all those in favor, say aye. Nay, motion carry.
I did not have any prepared materials for the airport authority meeting, um. One thing I do wanna mention before we get, um, airport manager report is. I am gonna request that we go into an airport authority meeting at our next meeting. Add that on with our finance and regular meeting, reason being, we have a, um. The underground fuel tank is out to bid now, and we will be receiving those bids right before. Me, our next meeting, and I would like us to approve a contract to fill that, so we can just get rolling.
And we don't wanna hold that up. Telling your teacher you left early. Glad you came.
I remember the next one.
Dennis, if I could. I apologize to Dennis too, I didn't reach out to him today about the meeting, and it was a tricky one, because the first Tuesday of the month is the first of the month, so.
Right, I, you know. Sorry, I apologize, I was thinking today, or tomorrow, or next week was the actual meeting, because today seems like a Monday to me, so. Anyway, uh, our, our normal procedure on the first of the month is to go to the airport and we take pictures of all the stuff. Uh, you know, at the fuel farm, uh, we start downloading reports, we've gotta do the sales tax and all that stuff, so. The, we had a jet in this, uh, this morning, or noon, or two o'clock today. Matt laughed and it was raining, it's like, so I'm gonna go home, start all those reports. So I get a call saying we got the meeting tonight, so, uh, I was thinking about the meeting that we're gonna have on the, later in the month here, because of. Uh, the underground storage tank proposals are supposed to be in, I think on the eleventh. Um, so I've had, uh, two or three, uh, phone calls regarding that, couple emails. Uh, wanting some additional information, so hopefully we'll have, uh, a number of people interested in that project. Um, so. Uh, other than that, uh, last week we had some jets in, uh, for, uh, Alma College trustees coming in. Uh, we had a jet in, uh, maybe, uh, Saturday, thinking back to today. Um, dropped some people off, um, things start slowing down as we move into the fall season. Um. Pop dustin slows down, so less fuel sales there, um, just normal. Fall stuff, as we move into winter, just slow up sales and stuff, because people just aren't out about, so. Um, trees, they started cutting the trees a week ago last Friday, um. So, uh, they was gonna work on them each Friday in our locate, or around the airport there, um. But last Friday, they had some equipment breakdowns, so they couldn't get one, didn't cut any trees last Friday. Um, we're probably. Uh, maybe a third done cutting trees, I was gonna look at that, uh. Um, tonight, actually, to, uh, see where we're at, uh, this Friday, they're applying to come back, uh, on Seaman Road. Uh, cut some trees there and then move over to, uh, Eli Highway to cut some trees off there.
Is the total number of trees, Dennis?
Uh, if I remember, I think there were about fifty-six between, uh, ones that were taken down and the ones that were topping, so.
They got quite few done.
Yes, so, um, mostly they worked all on Seaman Road, uh. They do have, uh, a few more there, um. So I think maybe. Maybe eight more to do there, and then over on Seaman Road, we probably have, uh. Um, maybe twenty-five to twenty-eight, I'd have to look at their, uh, the actual doc, document.
No, they're removing, moving off the property, they're just not following.
Uh, they're, uh, um, in some cases, they're falling, but most cases, they're cut brush. Uh, tops and everything, they're chipping that up, so. Um, in some cases, the homeowner wants the logs, so they're cutting them up at four foot lengths, and putting them in a pile when they want those. So, uh, there's one homeowner that wants more chips, so stuff on Eli Highway. So we're to that spot, so. It's going good, she doesn't, you know, they plan on doing it every Friday until they're done, so I would anticipate probably two more. Fridays, it will be done, so.
That's good weather, so.
Yeah, uh, and they, uh, two weeks ago, when they first started, they wanted to start at the location on Seaman Road where it's kind of wet. But it's been really dry, so they wanted to get that done first, and that's what they did first, uh, that first, uh, Friday, so. Um, so it just, uh. We just have to follow up with the homeowners, uh, he just called me today and said that, why not Friday and whether you're planning to work, so. Um, just wanna check with those, make sure they're aware, so. Other than that, just, uh, hopefully gets a bunch of bids on removing the tanks and stuff, so.
Quite a few projects ahead of us.
Yeah, yeah, which is fine, uh, long as we have good contractors and we don't have to chase them, so. You know, so everything far, so good, so.
Yep, so as of today, the airport authority has two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in their bank account. Uh, this week, we will be transferring the million dollars over there, so that the authority can start generating interest income. Now. Um. At our advisory meeting, uh, we talked in length about. What we would like to accomplish next summer, uh, particularly with the projects that are federally funded, that, um, our engineering firm. Will work on, um, getting to bid this winter, um. Can you tell the board a little bit about the, uh. The repaving project that is gonna be the big project to be a priority for?
Yeah, um, we have a project that, uh, is around the tea hangers there, um. That, uh, that's been on our, on the airport list, at least twelve years, so, um. Every couple of years, uh, Michigan M Doc comes around and they grade all those locations, uh, each of our runways. Um, ramps and, uh, around the tea hangers, and that's, uh. Uh, once it gets below fifty, uh, you know, it gets a, what they consider a poor rating on that. Um, just recently got below fifty, um, so, um. That'll be a project that, uh, be, uh, good to get completed for the people that have airplanes and ramps there and stuff. Um, the rules have changed a little bit on that, uh, when the taxiways were built back, uh. Fifty years ago, over fifty years ago, um, they were thirty feet wide, and now, uh, the requirement is. They won't pay anything wider than twenty-five, so we'll have to be narrowing up some taxiways, unless we wanna pay extra funds to, uh. Uh, keep the width, and we also have that same issue down between the tea hangers, uh, they're paved wider at this point. Uh, so we'll have to get into some discussions of how we handle that going forward. Um, we also have, um, we're gonna start working on a lighting project. Uh, which is scheduled to be, uh, uh, update our lights, uh, that's been on the project thus for a number of years. Um, subject to funding, um. That should, uh, that should be, uh, a little more, um. Simpler project if we just, uh, leave the, uh, concrete cones in the, in the actual airfield. Just update the wiring between the cones and fix the top fixtures. Uh, I think the engineering firm last day or somebody came out and looked at those cones and stuff, just to make sure that'll work. Uh, when they originally was put in over twenty years ago, uh, they didn't run conduit between the concrete, uh, lighting fixtures. They just, uh, direct wired it or laid the wire in and hooked them into those. This time, uh, they normally put conduit between, so if they have to rerun wires, they don't have to, uh, re-dig everything up and digging out, so. Um, but, uh, that should save the airports money, plus we've. Uh, we'll go to LED lights versus what we have today, so, um. Every once in a while, we get storms, uh, I think we got, uh, like five lights out, uh, right now, um. We just re, they're just normally bulb replacements, so, um. So we'll just, uh, those will be the other project coming up, so. Um, and potentially, uh, we may get, uh, a grant for the new, new terminal, so. Anything on that yet, but, uh, good news, uh, so far, so. Um, I think what was interested in our individual map meeting that we had with, uh, Michigan M Doc. They said that, uh, uh, there was a number of applications for terminal upgrades here in Michigan. There was only three airports that submitted a terminal study. And last year, they awarded three terminal, uh. Uh, improvements, so, and I think two out of the three had a study, so. Uh, if the trends stay the same, uh, hopefully we'll be one of those going forward, so. So, yeah, potentially we could have a lot of projects going on next year, so.
A new airport.
Yeah. We're also looking at doing some other stuff, painting, uh, roofs and stuff like that out there too, so. That'll be more as a bid as we get down the road, so.
Fantastic. Looking in the ledger, and we've got over a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in fuel sales. Posted.
So, yeah, like I said, I, I, it started raining with the jet left, I, I just didn't think about it, uh. Coming to the meeting tonight, I was thinking it was next week or. Today, I kept thinking it was Monday anyway, it was the first of the month, but, uh. It's funny, because security guards said, hey, this morning I was here early, like about eight o'clock, and. He said, oh, you're pretty early for the meeting tonight, I didn't even dawn on me that, I thought they were just joking, so.
I don't know if you have any other questions, so.
Think so, thank goodness.
Keep up the good work out there.
Inspiration to go back, uh, to our regular.
Meeting, okay. Moved by Tim, supported by George, to exit the airport meeting and go into the regular meeting. To see if that guy with the Oderkirk on his shirt wants to say a few words.
Good evening, I'm Tim Oderkirk, and I live at thirteen thirty-eight Toma Drive in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. And I'm running for the Michigan House of Representatives to be a stronger voice for the ninety-second district. Um, so the ninety-second district is Arquita, Emerson, Ethany, Pine. Seville, Alma, St. Louis, and then just including within the city limits of Ithaca. And then all of Isabella County, all the townships and all municipalities within Isabella County, so that is all of the ninety-second district. I, uh, grew up in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. Um, my grandparents lived in St. Louis, uh, my father built the Burger Kings in Alma and St. John's. Um, I went to Mount Pleasant Public Schools my entire life, I graduated from such a Michigan university. And did neurobiochemical research on the East Coast, and then got a law degree, um, in intellectual property law. Uh, met my Staten Island wife, and we decided to move back here to Mount Pleasant to have, raise our children. And to actually live next door to my parents to have that experience, I have three children. Um, they are all grown and have gone and done great things in their lives, and they are all different parts of the world, doing what they do and are very happy. Uh, my wife works for the Gracha Isabella RESD, she's an early childhood special needs expert. For the populations between zero and five years old, um, primarily her area that she works in is Isabella County. Again, she is with Gracha in Isabella, so she does different spaces depending on where the needs, needs lie. I work at Central Michigan University in the College of Education and Human Services in the Charter School's office. Um, I am the Associate Director of University Relations, my function there is to help bring the K-12 world. And higher ed closer together, whether that's taking K-12 students and making sure that they can see that they can be successful. At higher education opportunities, or the resources that CMU has with teaching, counseling, business, down to the K-12 world. I work on building those two worlds together. I also am a member of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education, I've been on the board for sixteen years. Most of those years as board president or vice president, I've also been on the board of the Triple Watershed Conservancy for twenty-one years. And helped form the Mount Pleasant Public School Education Foundation. In all of that work, I've learned a lot about how to listen to my community, especially through the work of the school district. And going through COVID, but there's other things that's happened over the sixteen years, that you learn how to connect with and have conversations with everyone in our community. Listen to them, ask questions, learn things and make decisions. Um, I think I've been an exemplar in that process, I definitely believe in the process of boards and commissions and the work that they do. Driving vision for a district, and I think Mount Pleasant Public School is a good example of some of the contributions that I've done, um, along with many other people. But I wanna take those skill sets to the state legislature, I wanna take the ability to listen to the entire community. Learn what's going on, where the issues are, and go to the state legislature or the Capitol, with all the departments that they have. To help things happen, I think our area has been neglected, and there are many things that need to be taken care of. That are not having any movement, and so my goal is to be a stronger voice to get things to move forward. Some examples, um, I've been visiting all the townships and all the cities, and one of the. And one of the big topics, and I'm sure you probably heard about this, is the water quality in the Chippewa River and the Pine River. And the Ecoli and those other issues that are growing in those spaces. Um, um, the sewer systems and the septic systems in those areas. Those townships are asking for help. Eagle has been finding them. They want and they need supports to be able to figure out what their next steps are going to be. Um, there are a lot of townships in the Northwest County portion of Isabella County. But Riverdale and all of that area is under the exact same rule, things are happening. We need to figure out and need to support these communities. Um, other areas, um, I wanna help and continue the stabilization, stabilization of public education fund, founda, uh, funding. Um, I know a lot about that area. I do it in my day job. Um, I do it in my night volunteer work. Um, and so there's a lot of areas and some things that need to be corrected and stabilized. To help our public education systems move forward. Another area is in ag business. Um, I think with, there's a lot of area for entrepreneurial and um, and generators to help. As we grow our ag business, I think we are in a very unique position of where we are located in the state. To do more of what I call, you know, getting everything that you eat within a hundred miles of your table. And diversifying our ag culture and our agriculture in our area, um, but I think we need help to help our farmers and our. Others go into that space. There's a lot of transitions going on with older farmers stepping out and then new people coming in. We need to make that process easier and ways that we can help support them. Um, an example there. Wise Township, and ironically, and their marijuana growing and what they do with their marijuana growing in Wise Township. Not to say that we need to do more marijuana growing, but um, I've visited these farms and they're growing a tropical plant. In Michigan that is highly successful. They're using new technologies to be able to leverage what they have. Good quality water, good quality soil, good infrastructure, moving abilities. And grow a tropical plant that has a market, and I think we can leverage some of that knowledge and spread it throughout the county. Again, I'm not saying that marijuana needs to grow everywhere. Actually, that marijuana environment is kind of um. Closing in right now and having some financial issues, so I don't think you're gonna see much more growth there. But that technology and the knowledge that they have is a great example of what we can do as we move forward. So I am running for the Michigan House Representatives. On the ticket in November. Again, you can vote by November. Absentee ballots, I'm sure you know, are already out, are about to be out. Um, you have ten days before to vote. Um, and then you actually have the day of the election that you can vote. Um, so I'd like to encourage you to vote for me. Um, I think I would be a very good voice for this area. Um. One of the things I envision myself doing is attending many of these meetings. You learn a lot by attending council, commission, city commission meetings. About where the issues are and what's happening in your communities. Um, I cannot attend all of them all the time. There are twenty-one townships, five cities. Six town, school districts, um, and you all tend to have your meetings on the same nights, so it makes it a little more challenging. Um, but my goal is to attend as many of those as I can, because that is where I learn a lot. And I think that's one of the things I've been addicted to as a school board member. Um, I actually enjoy these meetings, and I like coming to them, so I see the impact. That you have doing this type of work on our community.
Do you have any literature that you're passing out?
Can I hand it out, or do I?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
I'll let you know, I just voted for you. I voted today, absentee, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I voted last week.
Since when? After the absentee, he's been out for a while.
Is there any other public comments? Uh, we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and go into a closed session for union negotiations.
So move that we. Suspend the regular meeting and go into closed session for the union negotiations.
Order. Moved by Steve, second by Tim, to go into closed session for. Union negotiations.
Thanks, Dennis.
There you go. Still here, Dennis.
We, we have a uh. Oh, wait for. Matt, we don't have any um. Any decisions coming out of this, so I think you're free to close it out.
Okay, thank you.